Although this were from tenure, we're at the same level.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason why we don't have microphones is it's very hard to hear. They're not with microphones if you're logging in on a computer. Because the way that the sound comes in and out, without the microphones, they people need virtual eyes to hear perfectly. The recording is different, so the recording is now being the Google Meet itself.
Alright, so we call for order. Do we have any of our role calls please? Douglas Bebe?
Here.
Kathy Buckley?
Here.
Michael Habedorn?
Ed Maron?
Here.
Christopher Mishell? Crystal Palmer? Nicole Kupor? Derek Martin Sand?
Here.
Colleen Stone? Here. Alexis Hawks? Here. It may be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion please? Yes, motion. How about a motion to mark? May I have a second? Second to follow me? Is there any questions or discussions? Alright, just, um, just, uh, for information that, um, the the, um, oh, what should we do? Um, uh, Kamala extended the, uh, her order where, uh, our meetings are still not accessible to the public. So he originally had, uh, an agenda that said public comment on it. That's why the public comment has been removed to respond to Governor Cuomo's decision. So as soon as we're back into the public, public comment, will you put that on to more agenda? Alright, um. Um, David? Notes of these residential tests. Alright, the first what we'd like to do is we have a two retirement class that we would like to present. Our first retirement class goes to Sharon Lorbeck, um, the French teachers. And we want to thank her for 20 years of outstanding service. We are grateful for every day and every moment that you've spent with us in our meet and town. Thank you so much. This is your end. Our second retirement class goes to Robin Mitchell. She was a teacher's, a teacher A or student A for 16.72. Um, our next topic is, um, Parents Square and our president, who will be here in the Director of 21st Century Union.
Okay, and I'm just gonna need to put the screen down. I'm usually the one that's doing that in the background. Just give me one second while we That's the first time that's ever happened. You never do think halfway you're a big fan of politics. Superintendent Mannix had to make it fast, but I was only gonna get half of the blame, but. Sure, this is my thing.
You just adjust your volume. Sure, I can't. No, hands, I can't charge it. It's plugged in.
Guess I have to mute somebody else on this call.
Still logged in.
Okay, thank you for your patience. So. Parents Square, um, Parents Square, how many of you are familiar with my admin team knows all about it, but you as parents on board? May or may not be familiar with Parents Square. Parents Square is something new at Big Town and it's something that I think we've needed for a while. I know the admin team is excited about it and I have a lot of teachers that right out of the chute are starting to use it. So what is it? Parents Square is a tool that basically that lets us do three things. It lets us unify all of our communications within the district. Classroom, school, district, parents, student, teacher. Uh, it also, with oversight, by the way, which is very important in this digital world. So admins are able to see messages that are sent within a classroom to parents. Uh, at the district level, we have, uh, we have the oversight to be able to see into what types of messages are going to be sent home. Um, and it's linked directly to school tool, so teachers have the ability to send messages directly to just those parents of those kids that they have responsibility over. So the second thing is there are some other advanced features that we can do targeted communications. And I'll give you an example. We had a, um, a cutover for some fiber at Cumberland Head that was gonna be happening. And it was able to target just those teachers that were affected at Cumberland Head Elementary School. Or for example, if we want to email just pre case teachers, we could do that. If we want to send a message to staff, parents and students, we could do that. Or any combination of those. And compared to with the tools that we had before, which were kind of a hodgehodge of school messenger, remind, email, school tool. That's all of those separate tools not working necessarily together. This being a unified platform makes it a lot easier for us to dive in, get the messages sent and increase that communication, which as you all know now is more important than ever. Since we're not all in the same place all at the same time. And lastly, um, and this, I'm not promising this for day one, but these are capabilities that we do have with Parents Square. I've only known how to use Parents Square for about two and a half weeks. Our administrative team got trained last Thursday, I believe it was. So we're already pushing the boundaries of what we know and our implementation person's been telling us that we've dived in pretty fast with this compared to some other districts. But some of the things that we'll be able to do, we'll be able to set secure documents, IDPs for example, to those parents who directly need to see them and have the ability to see which parents have actually viewed those. Okay, so that's a big deal. Reporter cards, being able to send report cards securely and see did parents access them. So again, not something that we can do now. If they go on the school to a parent portal, we know that parents have access to it, but we can't see if they've actually used it. Um, and it's have being able to send auto attendance notices, being able to send low balance notices for cafeteria. There's, there's a host of things. In fact, today I was working with, um, Director Chauvin, being, or Supervisor Chauvin, being able to get the transportation information sent out, which will be tomorrow or Thursday morning, so parents know where, where their kids are gonna be picked up, at what time, et cetera. We've always done these things, but they have been using different tools. So now, Parents Square at a glance, and I'm gonna be sharing this presentation with you. I'm not gonna show everything that's on the presentation to you, but there is a ton. And you can digest it at a later date, or if people ask you about it, you'll be able to have more info than, than you'll even have from me today. But basically Parents Square, it's three things. It's mass notification, so think emergency alerts, uh, posts, uh, emails, social media posting, Twitter, Facebook, website. All from within the same platform, as well as secure document delivery, which I mentioned. Plus, it also has classroom communication. So that is the direct messaging between teacher and parent, teacher and student, parent and teacher. Uh, you'll be able to set up, think about how difficult it is oftentimes to set up parent teacher conferences. And even when we're doing it virtually, Parents Square has the ability to have parents sign up for slots and the teacher be able to see who signed up and the slots are already taken off when people sign up for them. Sounds like something that's really easy to do, but logistically, we all know that that's one of the biggest hassles that we go through at the school district over the course of the school year. Um, I know this is not something we'll be using right now, but being able to do volunteering and signups. When we get back to some form of normal and, and the public is actually coming back into our building in real ways, we'll be able to do things like that very easily. And newsletters. I know that in the elementary, especially this during the closure, they were using some great tools for newsletters. But again, they were having to seek out different tools to do that. Parents Square has this built in so that they can, they can author and deliver those immediately within the same platform. Lastly, other school services. So imagine this one. Um, Nicole, I know you have some young kids that, uh, if you imagine having a permission slip sent home for a field trip or for whatever to pass. It's at the bottom of a bookbag. It gets lost, it gets forgotten about. We'll be able to send forms and permission slips through Parents Square and you'll be able to sign them on your phone. And then the admins or the teachers who are responsible for that can see a tally of who signed, who hasn't. So you're following up with those that you didn't get to, but you're able to see them immediately. And it doesn't get lost in a bookbag. Uh, calendars are already linked. Our, our schools' calendars are already linked within Parents Square. So if you're a parent, you look on the building, you're gonna see what's relevant to you because it knows who your kids are and who's tied to you. So you don't have to scroll through every single school. You're gonna see the schools that your children are already enrolled in so that the information is already relevant for you. School directory, they're in there so that you can get in touch with those people that you need to quickly. And at a, at a later date, if we choose to, we can also do invoices and payments through Parents Square. Okay, so now how else is it different? Because we can send text notifications, we can send emails, push notifications if you have the app downloaded. It can also do speech to text, or excuse me, text to speech calls. So on an emergency, it can still do what we've done before with robo-call. We keep those obviously to a minimum. But we have three other ways that people can be notified, two of which are ways we've never been able to do before. People have been asking for text notifications. Man, we have push notifications on their iOS or Android phone. We've got, parents can log in on an app, or they can hit the Parents Square website, whatever's more convenient for them. Alright, I know you can't see this very well, but I've circled something that I thought was an amazing little metric. We have had Parents Square live for a week. I've done two emailing to parents and I've done two postings on our social media. What that number in, in orange says to you right there is it says 30% of the parents in this district have already downloaded the Parents Square app in less than a week. 30%. That means that there's a pent up demand for parents to be communicated to and with very clearly. And this is something that they find convenient and have already taken advantage of that. We've done other things for years and not gotten 30% participation in, in that amount of time. So getting it in a week is kind of amazing. And the other metric that I wanted to show you, which I absolutely love, and this is a credit to our registrar at office and the good work that the administrative team does. Right out of the gate, now it's actually higher than 99%, now it's 99.6% of our families have contact info that they are reachable. I think the total was something like 19 families in the entire district. Six or seven of them were out of district placements, were not reachable currently. I was able to send an export to our administrative team and said, here are the families that can't be reached. Do what you can to bring them on in. So there's, that's a number to be proud of. It's hard to go much higher, you know, when your attendance is high, it's hard to go higher. When you're at 99.6%, how much higher can you go than that? You're always gonna have some that fall through the cracks, but it's nice to know that you can track down the ones that aren't. So, everything else that's on this slide presentation, I'm going to share with you, but I just wanted to give you one glimpse into Parents Square to see what it looks like from the user perspective. Just so that you, you have an idea in your mind when somebody says Parents Square, you've seen it already. Okay, so I am logged into Parents Square right now on the website. What I have, uh, now I have some tools that other people are not going to see. A parent wouldn't see, um, the ability to, to post alerts, but this is the one I sent earlier today. It tells me that posted on behalf of the Transportation Department and it has the text and it says that 2,118 people were notified. I could click on that as an admin and see who was notified. I could see who wasn't. And we see 38 people. There's not likes, dislikes and loves like there is in Facebook. It's just appreciate. So 31, 38 people have appreciated this. And if we scroll down to another one, Superintendent Mannix, we sent his, his reopening letter to the school community as well as posting in other locations. And 39 other people appreciated that post. So you know, you know that it's being viewed, you know how it's being viewed, um, and it's all in one place. You can't lose a Parents Square post. You don't have to search back through your emails and say, oh, I know I got something, but I don't remember where I saw it or who sent it. If we're using Parents Square the way it's intended, we have all of our communications all in one place and we can always find them. So I know that is a huge overview, but there's one other thing I forgot to mention before I, before kind of wind this up. We have paid for Parents Square. You're probably saying, well, this is great, but how much does this cost? What we've been able to do is take two of the tools that we had formerly used and add those two together. And that pays for about three quarters or maybe two thirds of Parents Square. And we would have had to purchase another product to do, um, what do we call it? Not attestations. Notifications for people to complete COVID screenings. This has, and I don't know if it's showing up on this screen or not. There it is. It, this is just, it, we're in test mode right now. But any staff member, parent can submit a daily health screening and their questions are customized for us. We, I was able to put the same ones that we had in there. And you have a, a log of who's completed, who hasn't completed. So we have a record of all of that. That would have cost us approximately $2,000 for the notification program to do that. That's built right into Parents Square. The other, the last thing to mention about the cost, this is also being paid for through, we're purchasing through BOSI's, so this is both equitable. We are the reason that it is, uh, through BOSI's, by the way. Um, our district introduced BOSI's to Parents Square last year. Peru actually bought it before we did, but we're the ones that introduced them to it. So because of that relationship, we're actually gonna be able to get paid back on it as well.
Do you have the notifications for the COVID screening that is going to be directly emailed to every parent every day?
Every parent.
And every staff member.
Every parent, every staff member, every day. Those posts can be scheduled, uh, just, just like any other notification that we want to. So that is ready to go right now. I mean, I could submit it, I could submit mine right now. I'll put it in my phone so that you can see it. Um, but tomorrow, when I, I have a livestream tomorrow morning with staff, I'm gonna be reviewing a bunch of technology things with them. This is one of them. And we think it's on Thursday for Parents Square staff as well. And that'll, this'll be reinforced. But the cool thing is, and I think Darcy's, uh, Principal Saffinger's building has three staff members who've already dived in and started using Parents Square without getting any official training. They just logged into Parents Square, saw the training guides and have gone to it. So I'm super excited because they have been wanting tools to do this that are easy to use and easy for them to learn. We don't want to put another burden upon teachers. This is not a burden, this is a reward for them to be able to use the tool and have a tool that works as well. So I know I, I talk a lot and I've been trying to talk fast so I can get a lot of things in, but this is something that I've been looking at for two years. And I'm just very, very grateful that we have it in the district finally. And I think it's going to pay dividends in the way that our community interacts with us. And rather than they said, we're telling them too much and giving them too much info, than wondering, how can I find out about X, Y, or Z? You have any questions? I'll take now, I'll take them later, but just thank you for giving us the opportunity to show it to you tonight.
Thank you.
Move on to reports. Our first report will be given to the superintendent of schools, Daniel Mannix.
I'll keep it brief, because I know there's some other good discussion points in here in the agenda. Today we've had our opening day with teachers, um, administrators have been here throughout. I thought it was really good. Um, usually you have a, an all staff meeting and there's a lot of energy in the room. We were missing that today, so that wasn't great, but it was wonderful to see the park come up, see everybody coming back, see people talking to each other. Um, and I know another person will share that. First was a done amazing job, getting it really ready for the teachers and crazy difficult task of assigning kids to all the different areas. Somebody better off that kid out of that. It's different areas and, uh, uh, so there, so everything's pretty much ready to go. Um, we do have some issues and I don't wanna hide those. We have a number of staff that, um, have resigned or retired. And we're finding it really, really difficult to find people that wanna work in such a delicate environment right now. delicate in multiple ways. We'll talk about funding in a minute. Um, you know, I think people realize how, um, local governments or state governments throughout the country are, are hemorrhaging. You know, so there's not that security that you normally have. And then just the idea of, you know, all the precautions working in this environment is, um, it, it, some people just hold it easily. God bless them. And some people have a lot of anxiety and it's totally understandable as well. And then just the budget continues to be an issue. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that with, um, with Jen in her next presentation. And we'll talk a little bit later on in the agenda about athletics. And I think that's all I, all I have. Our first day of school was going to be the 11th, but now the DTA has moved their superintendent's day to the 11th. So the first day of school will be the 14th, first day with kids. So let's talk a little bit about, if we can just transition right into Jen Karleman.
We're, I, we're gonna go over some of the finances that we are now dealing with. Um, our aid payments coming in, starting September 1st is our first aid. Oh, actually, I think that one, August 31st, August 31st. Um, are all coming in at a reduced rate of 20%.
So that's, and that was something that we talked about and virtually everybody in the state said, there's no way they can do that. So they thought it would be 20% of our foundation aid, which is like about $14 million, um, section of our aid. But it's over all these. So on our BOSI's aid, on our, then the BOSI's aid is actually on last year's BOSI's aid.
Yes, gradually going back.
So that one is, that's on last year's aid. So, um, and, and you know, this, they're not doing this just to beat the town. We had a bad aid run, um, that was promised to be fixed and then COVID hit and never got fixed. That's compounded the issue. But everybody is in, everybody is losing 20%. And then there was a lot of discussion that said, well, really poor districts, they're not gonna lose 20%. Or the districts that have a bad aid run, like us, they're having to lose another 20%. But it's just 0.8, 20% for everybody. So for us, for instance, I'll tell you, you know, it's exceptionally painful for sure, um, and unsustainable. But we receive roughly 48% of our aid from the state. Your schools like Mariah, they receive 75% of their aid from the state. So 20% of 48% is one thing. 20% of 75, 78% is a whole company. So it's, it's gonna be painful across the board unless they get this thing fixed. So go ahead, there's a bunch of other.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note too, none of this is equitable. So this is another very hard pill to swallow because there's, everybody has a different circumstance. If you use BOSI's more, you get more BOSI's aid, well, they're taking more from you. If you use it less, they're taking less from you. If you're getting more building aid, they're taking more from you. So nothing is equitable in any of this. It, it's by far the most bizarre thing I've ever seen, um, and extremely painful. They, they're saying this is a cash flow issue. Um, I know Mr. Mannix knows my feelings about. I, my feelings are, you know, if, if we do get it back, it's gonna be spread out. I don't know if anybody remembers the gap elimination, but they're gonna trickle it back in on the time. This isn't anything that's gonna be fixed immediately. I think we all need to understand that this, this is gonna be a long-term term thing. Um, and we're going to have to repair. And our, our 20% of our aid is 3.8 million dollars. Now, not only did they, that's the current year, now they went backwards to our BOSI's receivables for last year. And that, that final number, it was exactly 20% of what they, they owed us. And that was 143,000 dollars.
So, so we paid with fund bounds, cash to help BOSI's and to help our tax gap number, to help our taxpayers. It's really well thought out. And there was a promise to our taxpayers, to us, to the Board of Education, to me, that we would receive this money if we paid this money. Not a promise, not, not, you know, something going forward. And now that's about five, it's a half a million dollar hit to beat the town. It's a half a million dollar hit to beat the town. That's
My money's spent in 18, 19, and 1920. We're not talking about money that was spent in the current year.
And that's just BOSI's. That doesn't talk about a building aid or transportation aid, cafeteria aid, foundation aid, all that. So.
Yeah, they're even taking cafeteria. Any of the state, which is, it's a low number first because most of our money comes from the federal government. But they're even taking, and, and our receivables begin from last year. So they held our payments up. They were slowly getting us our payments. So April, May, and June are all from, our receivables are all getting 100%.
So one of the things I asked for today from the staff that was listening was, and you folks have seen my letters to Elise Stefan, um, Benny Little, Dan Steck, Billy Jones, right? I'm one vote, I'm one vote to those guys. And if we don't do this together, we're just gonna be crying and blaming each other. If we wanna work together, we can probably become 5,000 votes. And then you have a voice. Okay, and even, but I'll tell you one thing, that one voice, both letters, I got a phone call back to Elise Stefan, Billy Jones has called me, emailed me. It's that has, I guess I'm not in this district. Benny Little's retirement, so I guess we're not gonna hear from her. And then today I got asked to be on a panel with Elise Stefan and another congressman on how schools are coping with COVID on September 21st. So, um, sure, my voice, um, I'm not gonna skirt the issue for beat the town. But all that's nice and wonderful, but if we don't do this together, and I've heard this board talk about it, let's all work together and advocate for change. If you don't change this, retire, we help. Gone. Gone. Sports, never again. It can't, it's unsustainable. Some that should have, there are districts in New York State, Schenectady. Schenectady is now all digital, 7 through 12, because they can't afford all of their schools. Other, there's plenty of other districts that are looking at going digital just because it can blame people off and like shutter their buildings. Alright, that's how, that's how drastic a measure, um, this, this financial crisis is, uh, is causing to kids, right, and homes, employees. So we'll, we'll fight, but I'm asking for help. If we wanna look at each other and blame each other like they've done before in the past and say, well, I'm not gonna do this because you cut these guys, that's a fool's operation right there. We wanna, we wanna work together and go on a letter writing campaign and advocate strongly loud. We want to work together and go on a letter-writing campaign and advocate strongly, loud. Be as quick as you will, I think there's a chance that, here's the best chance for that. Number one, we want to outlast, that's always been my goal with the 2% tax cap, outlast other school districts. And there are districts, neighboring districts, and there are districts throughout the state, at least half of them, that receive this extra money called Save Harmless money that legislators don't want to touch, because those districts are used to living with that amount of money. So they receive more, basically more per kid, their funding formula is upside down. I don't know how you want to say it, they're receiving more in their funding formula than we're receiving less. We're underfunded, and these are called Save Harmless districts. There's districts around Brick, neighboring, neighboring, touch our district, who receive $2.5 billion more than they should this year, last year, year before. If that doesn't get fixed, that's just, that to me is an injustice to the students in the Beat the Town Central School District. It's an injustice to our taxpayers, and it's an injustice, it's an injustice to our employees. And I think we have to fight, and fight them out, and at least balance that formula. If we're all going to be harmed, harm everybody the same. We're off this whole box.
Is there any kind of theories why this is very, is there any person?
So in 2008, when there was this gap elimination adjustment, they froze everything, and they said, "We're not going to use this foundation, foundation aid funding formula." Foundation aid funding formula, I just said, excellent, super test, who would just take their kids, multiply by the number they knew how much aid they were going to receive. They could work on their budget, right? Like, right here? It wasn't a mystery. So with the gap elimination, which was a political solution, and it skewed all the formulas, they said, "We're freezing, we're freezing whatever mechanism in there." So as districts lost kids, because foundation aid is based on your students, as districts lost kids, base closures, different things, the hiatus out of New York, right? Their part of the formula was frozen, okay? And what's that?
At a higher rate, because there were more kids at that time. Yes, because they were made the same. So they were held harmless, even as their enrollment dropped. As in our vote, we're increasing our enrollment happen, we're not giving any more money. That's what we're talking about, that's our legislature. So that whole harmless has always been just given to those schools that had a higher enrollment in '08, '09, because everything was frozen then.
They wanted, because if you harm them, if you harm them by balancing that formula, those people might not vote for that politician. They don't want to deal with, because that might mean that that school district has to have playoffs. And I've shared, I'll share with you again, we have the list of all the schools that was attached to the letter to those same lawmakers I mentioned, that shows all the districts in New York State that I call the unsaved harmed. And I look at it, and it's just absolutely amazing. So there's three districts in our county that are harmed, and there's all the other districts are saved harmless. And I know nobody likes to hear this, because they're saying, "You want my money." I don't want my money, what do I want? What do we want? Not that, we want fairness, we want equity, we want balance, we want balance. So do we think it's our money? I wish it was fair. If it was fair, I would take it as fair. If we end up losing because it was fair, I'll take it. But it shouldn't matter what zip code you're in for a great education. And like I said, I think it's a social injustice, and I think we ought to work really, really hard, and I hope people want to jump on board and tag up on those emails I'm sending out. Hopefully, hopefully, we can motivate some kids, hopefully, we can motivate some educators to jump on board, because quite frankly, where we are is unsustainable. It's totally unsustainable.
Jen, so let's say, let's say that this formula becomes equitable, based on the economy, cash flow situation, if you mistake, as a whole, here's the cash flow cash. What are we going to look at for the next five years with respect to our budget cycle? We always have a fighting plan, right? But I just am not optimistic that maybe it will become more equitable, but as a whole, dollars will be less anyway for the next few years.
For sure. So maybe not.
Yes.
But my point is, we can just start looking at, will it become sustainable for the next so many years?
So you're looking at, you're looking at a much weaker educational system. You're looking at people advocating for their particular areas, right? One of the big things New York State Public Health Association is so worried about is losing their footing in schools and having these be county to AAU leagues, right? And all the people that are associated with that ladder, which is a paradigm. They said, I know Peter Stefan, I know the past presidents, I know the executive director, I call him upon.
But it's such a small percentage of our budget.
No, I'm just an example, French, French music, things we think are, I don't shave their head.
And all these half courses and college credit courses, you're going to get down to just four curriculums. That's what you're looking at.
So especially with this very root growth between the outcome and...
Absolutely.
Well, that's what we're fighting for, too, is that not to happen. I mean, parents that have means to make that grow, oh, don't overfund. Keen is, receives 5% state funding. 20% loss, 20% loss of state funding to Keen is, 20% or 5% is nothing, right? Right, so... One thing to think about, and I don't know if it wants to think this way, but it's the reality, is we're losing 20% of everything. We have bills that we have to vet. Do we want to pay it all and close our doors faster? Or do we want to pay, we want to pass that situation along? I don't need the answer right now, but... And we made these promises, and these promises were made up promises that were given to us. That's something to think about, because what the reality is, is you're either holding on tight and going to fight for every, every last bit, so that the freshmen and the eighth graders have a place to go to, that's not bare bones. Or, you know, we're paying down that 3.8, 20% to 3.8 billion dollars, right? We don't hold that back. That's a tear, a tear, right?
Yes.
I know you. So it's a game of hardball. Obviously, the politicians are playing hardball with us, right? If you don't think Cuomo can go take money out of the bank, why does Cuomo take money? Why does Cuomo put a bond app, or why doesn't Cuomo take money out? Who wants to answer that question? We know the answer to that, right? Play the big game, chicken or who?
President.
President. And who's losing out? Employees, kids, right? That's exactly what it is. Are we in an exceptionally difficult economic time? Yes, we are. But we're also in a time where everybody's got to play, play politics regardless of the harm. But I submit to you that I know people that like to hear it, but if we're losing 20% on the bills that we've promised, they might be, they might be looking at, have to do the same thing to the people we made the promises to. Something to think about. Before we stop pre-K, stop half-day K, all of them, these aren't scare tactics. These will be the options on the table. More language, right? These are the options out there. To no fault of yours, like, these weren't. Just nowhere can anybody say the Board of Education was foolish in their budgetary proposals. Nowhere can you say that. Now, in 2009 or '80, people said that Board of Education at one point gave 2% back to taxpayers, and then next year needed 12%, and then they cut for three years after that. That's that total mismanagement, up and down, yoyo effect. We haven't done that at a ground here at all. We fought for every single dollar, and we've been pretty wise with it. And that's why I'm saying to Jen is, you know, we, at some point, if you're not the first to go, you're going to have to have schools in New York, right? But there'll be doors that are, doors that are closed right now, today, that will not open tomorrow for kids. And if you're going to fight for it, what are you going to do? How much are you going to buy that? I guess I said, you hired me, you hired somebody who's pretty good with money, loves kids, and is not afraid.
So if there's any other questions, but that's our dilemma we're hitting right now with finances. And we will keep you up to date as far as everything that takes place, but I don't see that changing. The 8%, you know, that's what we're getting, the 8%.
They do say it's a, one more time, they do say it's a temporary...
Temporary cash flow issue. But that's what they're calling it. But it makes me, and the semantics vary, I need to think this.
All right, side of a question. Cuomo set up his budget for funding, I think it's quarter, or is it? We don't have a comp, we're not concrete, we're more fluid with how the budget in New York State works. Including funding for schools, if I understand correctly. So he is, and he hears tapes, is absorbing 20% of our 48% of funding. Is that basically right?
They're holding it back.
Yeah, they're holding it back. So the next time, or the next quarter, I can't remember if it was quarters or trimesters or...
Well, he switched up a little bit, though, and he open-ended it, where he can change, that's why he's getting away with doing something like that. So that, I can't remember how exactly it read. Originally, he was going to do quarter because, now he does 20% right off the top of everything.
Everything.
Everything. And that took place starting July 1st, I think, if I remember correctly, the way the, or July 7th, something like that.
It didn't impact us very much, because we don't receive money from the summer. Like, we don't have to make expenses. We lost, we recorded out to the port, we lost, I think it's at the port, maybe we lost a thousand dollars of bonds. That was Canary de Colma. But we didn't know that he was going to do what I said he was going to do, and everybody told me there's no way he's going to do it. Was that straight 20% across the board, or that's what he did?
So there's the potential that there could be actually more money kept if the budget is as fluid as he has portrayed it.
He's left it open-ended, he can decide where he's saving 40%. He has that in writing now, that he can change it at any time. So I can't say no.
Mr. Mann, I need to ask, you're asking us as a board to, you know, to write our politicians. Can you help us out? Anybody who may be interested in the other board, or whatever, some bullet points, like all these... I know you presented this to us in emails and texts, but a few bullet points would be helpful to make this easier.
Yeah, I appreciate your response to my, all my emails to the, to those lawmakers. Like, and I will absolutely do that, give that to the board, and give it to anybody, and I'll ask for help to create those from others, or similarly situated, and get it out, and give you the addresses. But it's not until we become a coalition, and I've talked about this in my taxpayer coalition, in my, in the polls, right? And so people are very apprehensive about that, right? That's what I'm talking about. How do we become a coalition that fights against the pilots that are happening here in the district? Because we got to make sure Warren Buffett gets his money, right? I mean, we don't want him to be mad at us, right? Who are we going to fight for? So maybe I'll, we want to build a coalition, and I'll do my darndest to give everybody the talking points specifically.
Nelson, would you like to add, or just anyone else have any questions about this?
All right. On what chapter and what, I'd like to introduce our new ex-afficio student board member. Her name is Alexis Hock, and this is the very first meeting. So congratulations, and welcome to the Board of Education, Nelson School Resort.
And my friend, I have good stuff for you guys to hear. So before I read on the report, I just want you guys to know, this is the first time in my entire school career, my friends are happy to go back to school. So you guys are doing something right. One of it is, we're all super excited, even my friends, you guys don't want to hear this as parents completely, but we hate the pandemic. We want at least three more months of summer. I am so, I've been so happy that. I was hoping to start on Friday, and when I heard that, I honestly cried. I was like, I want to go back. But Monday, homework. So Cumberland Head is looking forward to welcoming students back virtually and in person. It was a very busy summer behind the scenes at Cumberland Head. Custodians continue to work diligently setting the final touches on the building. The administrative assistant worked extremely hard to make contact with families, assisting with scheduling changes, and still completing the basic building requirements for summer. Preparing the opening day took quite a while, coordination with all departments. Teamwork has paid off, because we will be ready on September 14. Principal Salinger held an optional home meeting for staff in late August to field questions regarding COVID and vaccine procedures. Most staff attended, asking really great questions, and there are certainly some apprehensions, but teachers are ready to lead students to provide a full education. The extra time to prepare has really helped ease anxieties surrounding the start. Students who are participating in the Beat the Town Virtual School of Learning and Development were given the opportunity to pick up textbooks and materials at Cumberland Head on the staff opened conference. Parents expressed how happy they were to be given a fully remote option. An in-person open house will be held on September 9th for students in pre-K and K. Small groups of students will be escorted to classrooms for a 15-minute tour. Parents will be waiting outside for the children, and students in grade 1 through 5 will be treated to a virtual open house on the same day. Teachers are creating welcome videos that they will email to families. Principal Salinger has prepared a welcome back video for families outlining key procedures and expectations. Again, the videos will all be shared on September 9th. Staff opening days at Cumberland Head will consist of safety training, walking through various safety procedures, as well as providing time for teachers to collaborate and plan with colleagues. Teachers will also have time allotted for wondersee, like for new training. 99% of teachers participate in the summer training, so most are prepared to be up and running on September 14. Technology training will also be offered to teachers and aides. We are focusing on how to use Google Classroom, Webcams, and Google Meet for instruction. Cumberland Head teachers Mandy Bishop and Ashley Coller have contributed to this effort by creating Google Classroom training videos, and this is greatly appreciated. Again, we are looking forward to the start of this year. Faculty and staff at Cumberland Head are ready to face these challenges together and remain committed to our students. And to the elementary here. Principal Hocke have the lights of thank the custodial staff and buildings and grounds for their hard work and tireless efforts throughout the summer months to prepare the Beat the Town Elementary building. The move to remove three rooms of desks, tables, and chairs was countless. Kind of step with typical school building preparation, along with the multitude of new reopening requirements as well. The building is up in great shape and ready to welcome back our staff and students for the 2021 school year. Staff are eager and ready to return to school this week. They have been taking part in Google Meet and classroom preparations for the past few weeks, and all with an open mind and smile. They are eager and excited to welcome back students to the building for the first time in almost six... It's been six months? Oh, that's a long time. Okay. We are excited for the rollout of our new parent communication system, Parentware, which looks really cool, by the way. That looks pretty handy. This will be a great addition to our communication tools in the classroom, in building, and district level. Parents and parents... Parents in grades pre-K and kindergarten are being offered the in-person open house at this time. Students in grade one through five will take part in a virtual open house tomorrow night. With a welcome back video we'll email to each of them, by the classroom teacher, as well as a special video put together by Michelle Monting, Beaverton Elementary Counselor, and Sarah Popkett, Beaverton Elementary Principal. We are very excited to welcome back our students next Monday. The middle school, sixth grade orientation was held both virtually as well as in person. On August 26th, a pre-recorded message was provided to students and parents that included an introduction to their teachers, overview of the middle school philosophy, and most students expected self coming here. That evening, parents and students had an opportunity to ask questions during the Google meet with Principal Nelson, Mrs. Gabley, Mr. King, Mr. Manning, and Mr. Gutek. On August 28th, six student, sixth grade students were provided with a building tour and overview of activities at the middle school. Mrs. Gabley, Ms. Wood, Mrs. Bobby, Mr. Manning, Mrs. Knowles, Mr. King, Ms. Tenford, and Mr. Delkett were all on hand to help with the tour and public exchange at Uren. The middle school has got three incoming seventh and eighth grade students received personal tours of the building facilitated by Ms. Tenford. Principal Nelson was celebrated at a Google meet Fridays, September 4th, where students enrolled in the Beaverton Virtual School of Learning and Development. Principal Nelson provided a brief review of the virtual school expectations and answered questions from parents and students. The middle school teachers have been busy preparing novels, art kits, map materials, et cetera, for our virtual students. Students are scheduled to pick up their materials on September 9th at 10:00. Beaverton Middle School is partnering with the SUNY Cosberg School of Education and CFES Brilliant Pathways to offer an after-school virtual tutoring program called Birds of a Feather. Students will be able to receive content-specific tutoring by NHT students. Parents will be able to request a tutoring session via the Google form. Counselors have finalized schedules for our middle school students, and they are available on school to learn their story. Signages up around the building reminding, reminding students faculty and staff to wear face coverings and maintain a social distance of safety. Principal Nelson links a main form for not only creating the signage in the building, but also applying forest stickers, as much appreciated. And the high school. The high school flights begin by thanking all the individuals that had an intricate part in ensuring the health, safety, and educational experience of our kids. The team efforts from the Board of Education Administration, Department of 21st Century Learning, teachers, staff, secretaries, counselors, parents, and students have made this daunting task one that will ensure an extremely safe and high-quality educational experience for all involved. The high school freshman orientation was conducted virtually on Tuesday, September 1st. We had over 121 participants within the collaboration. We discussed measures from the health and safety guidelines and procedures to educational opportunities and graduation requirements that ensure a highly informed and current classroom class. We are extremely excited to welcome a class of 24 to the high school. Today was the first informative and collaborative superintendent day. Today, teachers and staff were provided with several opportunities to engage within health and safety guidelines and procedures to ensure an extremely safe start to the school year, ensuring that we meet or receive the safety guidelines set forth by CDC, NYSCP, and GOH. Tomorrow's experience will encompass a wide array of professional development around digital toolkits and the high-quality educational experience for our kids, both in person and virtually. While preparing, our teachers and staff brought an informed start of the school year around the instructional expectations. On Thursday, we will provide guidance around socio-promotional wellbeing presented by our wonderful counseling team and engage in faculty meetings that discuss daily operations and procedures to ensure a smooth start to the school year. Friday, teachers will, teachers will engage in a BTA day experience. We have a freshman chromebook exchange on Friday, September 4th for our freshman virtual learners. We will exchange in-person freshman Chromebooks on the first day of school via in-person classes. This ensures that all incoming freshmen obtain a new Chromebook for their high school experience. All student schedules are via, are available via school to. If you have, if you're having any difficulty obtaining this information, please call the high school office. All schedules will also be available for in-person students through the first grade class on Monday, September 14th. We will also have school personnel available to direct students on the first day if they're having trouble locating the first grade class. We have, we have had an eventful summer, and our chairman is excited to see our students on Monday, September 14th. And we are excited to see you.
Excellent, you did a beautiful job. Our next section, um, we got community support, I'll see no community assistance over both script, going to the next resolution. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
No abstain? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CFP, CPFP, and 504 recommendations dated 9/8/20. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mark. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No abstain? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, recall, preferred eligibility list, and retirements be in their nearby school. May I have a motion, please? And second? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? No abstain? Resolution passes.
Just a quick question. I, page seven, I'm trying to do it again. Um, the people that motioned in second, you probably made quite a lot of difference.
Yeah.
Okay, I just tell you what I think. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, school calendar and PD and nurse agreement be in their nearby school. May I have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I ask, just a last question?
Okay. And I'm second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion?
On the calendar, I had it put aside by side, but besides the Friday, the Monday changes, was there any other changes?
Yeah, so there was a PD data that had come out in March, and then we did take, uh, well, we had changed it before. We had changed the calendar, of course, that's the only change, is the 11. But prior to that, just rehashing, we had taken a snow, there's some good news too. We had taken a snow day, uh, off because we thought, my plan was to have our, our virtual days, a snow day be a virtual day, even if it weren't a virtual learning. And we did move my vacation day out, um, I think, or one of the breaks, um, to extend the week. Uh, the good news is, uh, state education department is allowing for pilot trial, air trial, um, experiments, snow days to be virtual days of work.
Any additional questions or discussion?
I think I'll do anything else.
So you probably added a day of vacation because you can use the snow day as a virtual, right?
Say that again, Mike.
On one of the vacations, you took away a day or you added a day?
So, so I took away a snow day. So I did, I took, I took away a snow day. So we had originally five this year, I know we're at work because it's on, I forgot. Um, we had five, we had, we had five, went to four snow days. But there was a vacation day too, like, that we took away the vacation because we needed more than just one day. But now we have those four snow days. So I don't wanna say we're never gonna use it because we, we may use an emergency day if the kids come to school, we gotta get them home. I don't know how that or is an emergency day, but we won't have to, all snow days will be virtual days of work. So we still have, so hopefully we'll have four days to, as virtual ones.
My feeling with the calendar, apparently, the only change was with the 11. The day, March 12th was moved to September 11th.
So the only change on this calendar was that P2 day, I was rehashing the original moves to extend eight, nine, and 10. The original were gonna be on the vertical.
Any other questions? Any suggestions? All in favor? No abstain? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers and grants, et cetera, be in their nearby school. May I have a motion, please? Second? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? I don't seem down to my, 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 I'll open. Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hygdon?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Christopher Michau?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Nicole Pore?
Yes.
Mark Sam?
Yes.
Hollins Young?
Yes.
By recommendation, the Beaverton Central School District adopted September 8th, 2020 authorization fee issued, and sale of serial bonds or notes in anticipation of such farms in an aggregate sensible amount of $472,066.
Mark is.
May I have a motion, please? And, and may, okay, but sorry, may I have a second?
I'll second.
You may make any questions or discussion? And my, now, the land, we've had a roll call, look. Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hygdon?
Yes.
Ed Maron? Christopher Michau?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Nicole Pore?
Yes.
Mark Sam?
Yes.
Hollins Young?
Yes.
Uh, next calendar board is additional items to declare. I'll be moving next week. I started trying to talk about, um, our update of the.
What was it?
Since we saw the last time, like, we had any additional updates on the, on the districts?
Yes, so, it won't. So if there, Quo mo' came out and said some, some sports could practice, a couple of sports could play. And then the New York State Public High Athletics Association, um, on Friday, came out with guidance on, you know, essentially how, you know, what would you need to do, the cleaning, the requirements, so to speak, on, on how you could play on your, on, I'm calling the approved sports, the approved athletics. Greg is, uh, Greg is here, uh, we've been talking all along, appreciate that. He serves as the chairperson for the High Council.
Uh, executive secretary.
Executive secretary. For the.
It's like all the conferences, top level conferences.
The athletic conference, which is handles all, basically all athletics in section seven.
There was two conferences, not Valley and section seven, and CBAC.
Yeah.
So we handle our competitive conferences, so the smallest ones, not much.
And you have some, some of this, maybe you're on, some of the guys from the NBA season and some women in the NBA season, they go to the same meetings.
Well, that's the athletic council.
Are you on that council, you wanna? Okay, so he's on the athletic council, which is a combination of the two, and section seven, um, CBAC, he's executive secretary in that. And, um, they've had a lot of conversations about, um, what they wanted to do. Unfortunately, when I talked to Greg, I told him exactly, I gotta write down what the, how the conversations go with the superintendents, and he writes down how the conversations go with the other directors, and believe it or not, they don't always parallel.
Ours is.
Well, the ours is, the ours is good. But there's a lot, there's very, very, very few districts that even if they have the money, wanna engage in athletics, and that shouldn't be, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone, um, just telling you. And you may be hearing some of the same thing, I may be hearing to a greater extent. And I can't, I think I actually have a more liberal approach, taking finances out of us and personnel and people out of us. My approach is, give us 21 days. Give me 21 days to see if we can run school for this young lady who wants to be back in school. You're, you're playing volleyball too?
Yeah.
I've seen you on the volleyball.
Yeah.
So, and I know she wants to be on the volleyball court too, but I bet you, you wanna be here in class with more friends, right? And I know the community wants probably soccer and volleyball, cross-country and all those nice things. But I know that they.
Also want their children.
That they want their children in school probably more, and push me to shut. And if we put them in together at the same time, I would be able to tell if it fails, where it fails. We won't be able to tell. But if I feel we can go for 21 days successfully, we follow rules, we wear masks, we clean everything sufficiently, we handle things well, we're eating, all the variable, enough people show up, we get to hire enough people, there's a bazillion, the transportation works, there's a, oh, I, there's this many variables. There's this many variables to opening school, right? You guys know these variables, right? I wouldn't be able to say that we did it. And if we did it for 21 days, and then we started having extracurriculars, if we did it well, then the things break down and probably we'd have at least confidence that at some point we could bring kids back, as we do, right? But if we mixed it together and the things fail in 14 days, we're not gonna fail, we can do it. And to me, the most important thing is to know that we can educate our kids here for those families that want their kids here. So that's, that's where I, and, and there's more people, there's only one other superintendent I know that feels that way as of last week. Um, there were three superintendents that said, with, with smaller schools, said, let's try to get back. And all the rest were basically, can't do it. I've been given time on what, should that take our focus off the primary goal of educating our kids every single day? So those are the guy conversations, and I, Greg, would you share some of the conversations you have?
I, I think you're, you're pretty accurate, I think, major schools, um, that's old school, and actually, there's some smaller schools, like, uh, uh, one of our neighboring schools is a D school, a class D school, and like, there's no way we can do this right now. We did a little straw poll, SAD is online today, and most of them were, let's be patient, let's try and see what happens, uh, with it, with the opening of school. There's a pretty strong push, uh, from some schools for soccer to start. I don't know what the foothold is to the soccer, but the all, the, we don't really like, let's do it, and, uh, so there's a little bit of battling internally, like, what should we be doing? But the bottom line goes down, it's usually the school's decision, grab soccer or any sports. And it is the conferences, jobs, provide the schools, were scheduled that the schools decided to grab soccer or whatever sport it is. So I think, and I agree with Mr. Man, it's gonna be a little bit of time. Let's get the school rolling and see how it's going, and then maybe we face it and we practice this and start that way. They don't start competing with neighborhood schools and so we're sure of it, we'll all work on it, so that would be my recommendation.
In the meantime, there is soccer going on, my kid plays it, right? And there's town soccer, my little guy Pax, he's over on the town field right now, playing. So there is local soccer going on for kids that, students that like to play. Now, one thing that was interesting to me is they say cross-country is a allowed sport, but I haven't seen a road race. in since, in the six months. It's all virtual, they're all virtual, so why are we gonna be first? I don't like being. So that was surprising to me, I understand it, but when you breathe heavily, when we talked about this thing, this form is, physical education classes, you have to be separated at 12 feet because you're, you know, you're breathing so heavy and your propels and your aerosols go so much further. That has to happen at 3 o'clock, I'm sure it's another, uh, eight, eight to, to 3 situations, it probably goes on to 5 or 6 at night. So why are we allowing kids to run through that at 4 o'clock, but not at 8 nights, I love 12 to 2, I have people following, people watching here. It doesn't make any sense to me, but nonetheless, it's allowed. Uh, but I wouldn't want to be first, um, and I have a grand cross country in my school, it's a cross country runner college. My kids play soccer, so the two sports that are near and dear to my heart, although I love both of them, I'm used to, so I can't say that. You know, I love them all, but there's a whole host of unknowns, uh, like opening school, right? That make it very worse to me. And then we can have the conversation, or we can continue on the conversation of, in a perfect world, we can do this. A perfect world with imperfect COVID virus, but we also gotta discuss the financial implications of, of, um, having that much. And then there's a total 9 implication. What's that?
Or extra curricul- or, uh.
And all the extracurriculars? And the, and the reopening plan, which is one of these things in here, we, the safety committee said, because it was the guidance from the Center for Disease Control, that we're not gonna have extracurriculars, we're not gonna have athletics, we're not gonna have visitors. And those referees that come on your campus are their visitors. Right? And that other team that comes into your building is also visitors. What does the rest of the, what does the board want me to know? One, at the end of the day, I'll, I'll give you my recommendation, but we are gonna do more of a reform education. That's what we did.
So, yeah, 21 days is three weeks, um, talking about from the start of school, so even though the governor says we could start practicing the 21st, you're talking about October 10th.
Pretty much. Pretty much, right?
So that's another week, that's all, really?
So that's, well, a little more, yeah. Do you like calendar?
Yeah.
That week would be worth it.
Say that again once.
That week would be worth it. And we could do everything up in the morning, but then in a school staying healthy that way, that, I don't think any of the athletes would mind if we got to play that extra week.
Two weeks, yeah.
Oh, even between.
So here's.
We talked about all of the weeks, more.
Extracurricular. Extracurriculars, anything like that, like we were talking about, I would talk to this guy about it, we can't do any tests. Which means, like, we were gonna do at the end of the school year, we were gonna do spaghetti dinner for our custodial staff. We couldn't do that. We couldn't do our blood drives, we couldn't do anything like that, there's a lot of sort of performance that happened, so we had to wrap up hours during the middle of COVID, so that was interesting. Like, we all wanted to do that for the custodial staff, we were all gonna stay after school and come to dinner and clean up for that instead of them cleaning up for us for once, but.
I mean, it's not just, um, it's not just the students that we have to worry about. It's our faculty, it's our custodians, it's our full degree until central school district family. So, uh, and I'm particularly concerned, obviously, with COVID, but I'm worried about, um, jumping into any type of extracurricular or athletics too quickly, uh, they actually could all have each other if you want. So. But I'm a strong supporter of sports, and I would not be willing to see bodies on our, anything athletic. But I, I would want everyone in our district to be safe. So. How would this work? I'd allow you.
The delay is, the delay is to, just to be clear, my proposal I was saying was to be evaluating, see where we are from a health standpoint. I did say putting the finances aside.
So you're saying, because right on the 21st, we're, we're in the day. And it's a particular problem for the state to go back from.
Although, it's not, it's not, it's, it's the day that schools are eligible to start doing that. I just don't want to give them this conception of the status, because if you guys say go play, I'm like, alright, let's go play. And Greg might tell you, there's no way to play. Right?
But the, the, the versus what they've said.
It's allowed.
It's allowed. And all of them, it would be the first day of practice. And New York State's rule now is they increase the number of practices, we have to practice 10 times before you can compete in contests. So you have to have 10 practices, no matter what your start date is. So the earliest you could start by the state standard is September 21st. If you start, uh, October 5th, you'd have to go basically two weeks before you could play contests. So you're looking at the middle of October, 10th of October. You definitely, if we were to do something like that, we'd be looking at a drastically reduced game schedule. Uh, I don't know what the league's are gonna do, I don't know, because I don't know if we're having anybody that's gonna be doing the same thing.
Sure.
You know, uh, maybe other schools are gonna start playing, we just won't be on a, on a games schedule. And, you know, maybe it'll be three other schools that'll do the same thing as us, and we decide we wanna practice for 10 days, and then we're just gonna play a different schedule with those three schools that are, it'll be same thing over.
There's clearly some schools that can't play because they're closed because of the virus outbreak, and that, you're not allowed to play when they're closed because of the virus.
Is you closed because of the virus outbreak? So there's, even if you're, even if you're online?
Then you're allowed to play if you're online, you're not allowed to play if you're online and you're closed because of the virus. Because if your plan was, like, our plan, we have kids online that can play, we have kids here, if we close because of the virus outbreak.
Not, sorry.
Nothing, and there's a couple of schools over by, um, Elizabeth Town area that closed because of the virus. Thank you.
I think everything, they get a win, uh, because they were trying.
As well, when you read the strict instruction of the law, they, they get waivers, leave pads, right?
Contrary to Serenac, who's gone all virtual by choice, they could play.
They could play.
Yeah.
I think just start, how would people come close to organizing practices and transporting students to games if you're in all virtual?
So.
Do you send them, could, do you send them a bus to help? Do the students go practice?
So, so one of the things that all this work that would go into this would be foolish right now, when you should be spending what we have in spend is every waking moment, working on making sure, I think you came in and was yah hooed because you've had another test.
That's our side.
That's our side. So have you been thinking about how to pick kids up for transportations? Should I be spending any time thinking about that? If you tell me too, I will.
Well, that's, that's if they're not just a kid that goes to school. This wouldn't be. And the kid show up here. And everybody just pick up here, and it wouldn't matter. There's no regulation that says a school has to provide transportation to and from the practice. Somebody, just because the conversations happen, right, to me, is that that's what I have to worry about, have to think about. And, you know, there are several schools that have decided that they put on the sports, it's gonna be, parents are gonna transport their kids, and bring tour group viruses for virtual, and there may be even a limit of transportation to and from contests. So that is out there, it's an option, I'm not saying I recommend it or not, I don't want to even try to think about that yet.
So, do they, we have to follow the rules? And I was gonna go see Paxton's game over at the town hall, he's gonna play volleyball, I love that. And, uh, my wife's so worried, and I said, oh, I forgot about the numbers, but I knew she was bringing Mike. And she, and she said, nobody follows that rule here, and I said, I know, so I'm gonna follow the rule, I'm not gonna be the hit the grid. You're gonna force that.
Well, we talked about it, we talked about issuing IDs or something, give them out to kids, say you have two kids, two kids, two pants, you can give those passes to whoever. Why not whoever's the slight person, chest of pants? It would be, it's gonna be a big task, there's a lot of things, we, we found it out just to have an answer for you if you're asking, how would I plan on enforcing it? Right off the top of my head, the, the first thought that we had was, every kid on the volleyball team has to get, has given two passes, and they give them to their parents wherever comes to the game, and if the parents don't have them, they all stay at the game. But that's gonna be an enforcement thing where I am, or someone's gonna have to go around and enforce that, because we'll follow the rules. You know, um, if they're not, if they're P H S parent, and they don't have their pass, they're gonna go home, they're gonna leave, leave the facility.
Pass or not?
Yep.
Um, I know these eight principals are looking for eight, or these four principals are looking for eight part-time custodians to help us. I know our teachers are, do I know we have, they just have been, they're part-time custodians?
Five. Four only.
Five, so we're still short for that. So if we start pulling our custodians to clean, which there's a cleaning requirement, right, Greg?
In transportation, if you were to provide that, because we only want to put at max two, five on a bus. So where you could take a big, medium, or six people together, now you can talk to three buses to get the team to wherever you go. I mean, it's just all of these, it multiplies, all these things multiply very quickly.
If volleyball, if volleyball needs 10 practices to compete. And our gym is set up with 180 tables, Matt, how many tables?
112.
112 tables and 112 chairs as a mat. Every day, we would be spending those custodians that you were hoping to be cleaning to go tear that down. So we can practice, what's that?
Have practice, and then they not clean again, it's a free practice, and they go, everything that helps.
Because they're a school.
Yeah, and then just gymnastics.
Gymnastics can't, because they keep that thing set up the whole time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we used to take down some, really, we got away from that. Aren't because that people were nice to teach gymnastics, at that time. Or outside.
Will we already have cost estimate, or is it cost? Try to do this portion of our lottery, right now, for extracurricular students?
Yeah, not spending any time, uh, whatever, no.
All right, because there are, so, to put it in the back of it, um, parents in the community have been involved in these sports, there's been baseball. There's soccer, and there has been, my knowledge, no impact with the virus to, strictly the virus to those, those sports. Outside of the adults, they have their parties. I'm talking about, I'm talking about students. So, so we, so that's, that's their perspective. But if, if the conversation is driven around the extra work and the logistics associated with costs, we don't have, that's.
It's driven around the whole age group.
No, I know, I know, but, but we just, we just talking about volleyball, right? And, and, uh, at the end of the day, you have to, you have to go explain why we do such a good. I'm just trying to find a, a conversation, an explanation as to why we're gonna go a particular direction.
Can I just tell you the two sports that are being pushed very hard to be practicing and playing are soccer, boys and girls, and cross country. Those are the two that are physical older than the area A D's that they would like to see start playing. Everybody knows there's a facility issue with gymnastics, there's only three schools that compete gymnastics in it. Uh, however, there's virtues that involves just about your school, the C D A C. Everybody knows there's a problem with, with volleyball, there's only one volleyball school that's separate from their facility, could be open. And, uh, and the, the restraints on playing football without contact, without equipment. I had a meeting with Robert Zayas tomorrow, and the first question I'm gonna ask is in the guidelines, it says, no equipment, those are ball equipment. Because the hard interpretation it is, and you can't use a ball, you can't touch people, I want to see a coach football. You know, this is pretty hard.
It's equipment in gym class.
I don't under, I, I mean, I, I've been involved in soccer, I've been at the school for years, years, and I don't understand how a gym class can have a man, have a manmade of 12 feet apart, but you can put girls on a soccer field that come in big contact for an hour and a half without, um, having the same model up here, do they play with masks on? If a mask comes off, do we call the game? Like, I, I don't even, I can't even come close to understanding, um, how we can take that chair of having an uncontrolled environment. We've been doing that.
Some are like. Some are like, it's basically the parents is dictating whether or not you want your son or daughter to be exposed. If you don't want your kid to be exposed, don't put them on my team. I'm willing to take that chance with my son, I know your kids play basketball, your kids, or baseball, soccer, soccer, baseball. We're willing to take that chance, if you're not, don't let the kid play. So I understand there's physical contact, and I honestly, I, everybody has a, a great point. To put athletics above education is ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. But as everybody knows, athletics and extracurricular activities, that's big parts of education as well. So I mean, I, I understand everybody's problems and the money just, that compounds, that's almost a deal breaker. And I'm, I, I love sports, but, but I'd rather have my kid know how to pat, or, or actually free throw. I, I, I think we don't look when we're gonna go with.
So you're saying, so I guess the, the, the question is, how, how does starting sports now affect the education point? If that is, it adds to the overhead, every, if you start schools over, the efficiency of it, that sounds like, yeah. So how is that gonna change then on the previous, let's say, like?
Well, I, I, I think I would go a different point, though, we'd go back to that, but my point is, you just mentioned it, you mentioned it. Our kids are already playing.
Yeah.
Our kids are playing, what's the problem? Is it because they're not playing by, in, in New York State Public High School Athletic Association, those guys, and whoever that is? They don't have a say in this, but like, why couldn't we enhance what they're doing? Because, because of COVID, they had to wear goofy uniforms, right, with guanas, it's a, it's a gold guanas, it's like eagles. And they go, they have to play on, on these back fields.
So you're talking about, you, you're going to review rules and.
No, see, I'm not saying, I'm saying, would we play, would we play this week? Actually, we have to buy this. Come on. We didn't tell anyone today, we didn't, you know. So, yes, and, and so if we played P H S, like, why wouldn't we, not intermural, but it's, play P H S? Unless, why not let, have a tambourine on, on, you know I like tambourines, you guys remember that? On October 9th and 10th, and invite a bunch of teams here and have a, a great tambourine, if we're safe, unless it's.
And going off of what you said, most of the time, like, the baseball premier, and it's been touched, you're playing with kids from other schools. So we're already in contact with kids from other schools, like, I'm playing volleyball right now, it's not a league, but I'm playing with kids from Serenac, I'm playing with kids from Class, we're all playing together. So we're already in contact with them, and I mean, that's not ideal, but like you guys said, if your parents are okay with it, we're gonna do it, because we all want to play. And especially since most athletes, our summers revolve around those sports. Like, during summer, I have volleyball every week, and that's all my summer is, is volleyball. And not having that has killed all of the athletes, and then all of a sudden, everyone's like, oh, you guys play, we're gonna play. So all of us have started playing, like, there's baseball, I know there's basketball, some form, there's soccer, there's volleyball. I know the people who have been running, I think they obviously don't have a little eat or anything, because, but like.
You could have meats, you could have an invitation.
Exactly. And we're just, I was just like, hey, we're trying to get it while, and like, all of my friends, we're teenagers, so we want that season, because this is our last season. So we're really pushing for that, and we're trying to get it all the rest we can before we go into that season.
You think it has to be unofficial, because E D A C, it doesn't matter to you what they put on.
Just, just playing would be nice. Just play on team.
That's what I say, it's nice to just play, it's nice to.
That's it, that's all we want. That's all we want.
A lot of the, a lot of the kids are not really playing these seasons. There are players that are trying to grow the career, but there are, there are players that aren't playing right now. Perhaps because we have way more resources and stuff. Right, so we have, that's up to the community, we have to try to answer. Alright, so what would make this difference? Let's say we wait, let's say the conversation is we're waiting three weeks to get a fee grounded to start the school, it's focused on. So what changes in three weeks that makes it feasible for us to start athletics and that we would be able to have? What is it, what is it that three weeks suddenly can't?
We have proved that we can have seventy percent of a two thousand student district plus faculty, plus other staff members in an enclosed building successfully. Then it's almost like feeding a baby. You don't just give them all the food, you give them one little bit. If they don't react to the strawberries, then you give them a raspberry, right? If we did everything all at once, we could end up forcing ourselves to close. Or temporarily, long-term, short-term.
What is it?
If, if there is, if COVID is brought into our district. If there's.
We're, we're heading inside of a string right now, we don't even have cases right now. If you have, if you have five cases in one of these schools, how many of those, how many teachers that are got their back home, that are coming in and they're fearful, how many of those teachers are saying, stop, I'm done? How many? How many? Can you run school if you have five teachers sat down? Probably, probably could do it three teachers.
Oh, I, I totally, I can, I can, I'm just trying to make sure that we have, answer the question that what the community, the public thought about this. If growing was that, sports, it's dependent, sports, how does that make a difference? What do we do differently from what we do at the university now?
We're not making a difference, it's just that we're establishing that we can run school and then trickle in sports October fifth. Where they're about, if we follow these tremendous proposals. And then we see if there's any, any issues that seem to develop symptoms or come out positive. And then we shut down sports and try to save the educational process. Right, I think that's it.
I'm just trying to focus our rationale, so rational is, we're trying to, we're trying to try a lot of, and do that. So whenever people come and ask a question about, well, can we play sports also, we might be able to do that. We can say, we just want to show you know this school's safe first, we'll focus on that.
But the, 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 these towns didn't have the same requirements that New York City Public High School Athletic Association came out with. The towns didn't have the same requirements that Governor Walmore or the Department of Health came out, for schools. They, nobody's going to a town game, if somebody gets sick, are they gonna try to take the car from that volunteer coach? But they'll sue you, we're getting sued right now, who's the local area officer? Because a parent didn't like the fact that we had to teach their kids remotely when we were on pause. And oh, guess what, it wasn't the law, right? We're getting sued, we're spending money defending them, right? So, like, will people look at, will they say, well, I don't get a true loss of nine million dollars? I would still want my whatever because my kid was harmed because they had COVID. And now they have a heart issue and they have a, they have, you know, there's, 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 students are people that have almost like long-lasting concussion-like symptoms because they had COVID, COVID. Do you think somebody's gonna wanna maybe blame us for that? They usually sue everybody, figure out, you know.
So, so why would three weeks, we start athletics again, because push right there.
I, I guess the point is that I am concerned about that no matter what. And that I think we're doing it really well in the town, we don't have these issues. And the second we open up at school, I was answering your question, when parents, when parents say, we've been doing it all along, why can't we do it in school? My question is, why don't you keep doing it longer? Right? Play baseball, play baseball, yeah, play baseball and then maybe we can football and maybe there's a vaccine, there's a lot of promise there. And maybe in late February, I mean, next, they'll be all swamped and everything. All of the kids who are out there and play football. But like whatever you've been doing all along, keep it rolling. And maybe, maybe glamorize it, maybe put a little polish on it so the kids have better experiences. And it may be, and maybe we say, like, the weekends, we don't have as much cleaning to do on the weekends. And if we get a four day, or it's like, everybody wants to come, has to bring a hundred and twenty bucks. Just like we do for our youth teams and that page with custodians. We can have a volleyball tournament, you'd probably agree with that, right? Be comfortable with those, right? We could have a cross-country invitational quite easily, if somebody wants to do that. And we could have a soccer on the field. And as long as we have a plan, like you wrote, right? You have a plan to clean up for your, to make sure that your kids are safe when they're here, right? Excavator, that's what we had John Campbell.
Our exposure, our exposure allows, you live by one of the choices somewhere.
Um, so I'm not saying that it's a Beatman Town sports thing. I'm saying that we allow these things to happen, like, they allow them to happen here to boost our stuff.
But you're posted and then it's on to them. You have your own risk.
You can have your own risk.
Which I think is different from the town. When people see towns sports, they, it, it's a family decision, it's a child decision. It's at your own risk. But once you enter into the school system, it becomes a school system's responsibility to protect and preserve the health of all involved. And if, and if our main priority is to educate students in our district, district to try to keep our doors open. So Monday to Friday, we can get students into our building to get some type of edu, to get a good quality education and a social experience. Then something has, something has to give.
Jen, sorry. Something has to give.
Something, something has to give, I mean, we can't, we can't. In this particular journey, this year, we can't just do, what did I say? Cause enough. We just can't do everything at the rate that we've always done it. And we just, I want Alexis to play volleyball. She's a volleyball player, I would want it for her.
You're saying we can't do it.
We, we can't at the same rate of speed that we've always done it in the past. And I want to see, sport starts in August. And we're still, and, and we're nervous about opening up.
Yeah, it does.
No, no, but I'm just saying, I mean, we're gonna have this question about that, everybody needs to put in their two families. And, and, and like Doug said, it's responsibility and I get that. But once it enters the property of the school district, it's no longer just a parent and a human decision. It's, it's our whole community and how it impacts our district, other districts, our students, our faculty, our custodial. And that, the rollout, the rollout can't be, oh, we're back, let's do this. It has to be, okay, we've mastered this, let's take one more baby step and see what happens.
Why do we have to, why is, if we're doing this all along, the community's doing this all along. Why do we have to take ten days to practice?
Because the government told us.
Who's who?
Because the government told us, we do.
Because the New York City Public High School Athletic Association says to do, and that's more days than one. We've been doing this all along. Does that make sense to you? Does it make sense to me? What, is it, like, would you take our baseball team and say, okay, we're not gonna play for ten days? We didn't play it all along. Maybe cross-country, these ten days, I don't know, maybe they haven't run at all. Soccer doesn't need, need to take a break, but it's just these arbitrary rules that are imposed on schools by some governing body that make it much more difficult. And if we can keep, keep doing it safely in these other areas, why wouldn't we keep doing it one more day? Control the controllables, have people town for education and have these wonderful opportunities. And maybe we can support them with our facilities if they're willing to do cleaning or pay for cleaning. Maybe we can have a baseball tournament with whatever, maybe it's Mariners, but maybe it's Purdue. I doubt it, I doubt it's Purdue, but maybe. I'm just, I'm just trying to think a little bit differently then. You either, you either can't do anything or you're, you've got on a schedule, a CDAC Section Seven schedule. And I don't think you're gonna get a CDAC Section Schedule, that's what the meeting called, that doesn't collapse itself. You listen to the A D S, you think you're gonna get that scheduled?
I don't believe it. We're not gonna be almost scheduled, you get it?
But if you, but if you ask Coach Lucy and all those soccer guys to keep playing till the twenty-first, they already said yes. And if you ask them to play till October fifth, they're probably saying, awesome. What do you think, do you think they'd say yes or no?
I'm sure some, I, my only concern is, is a couple of points that you made was, not every kid participates in those summer leagues. Our interscholastic program incorporates or includes a lot more kids in those summer leagues. The purpose of those ten-day practices is so that kids that haven't been doing those offseason conditionings can be well-conditioned and be conditioned safely so that they participate. I would never argue that the town has a better job running their sports than the schools do. We have professionals that have done it, are certified, there's qualifications that teachers or coaches that have to go through. So there's a better product with, with interscholastic. However, I mean, at this time, there is, there's a big need for athletics. And if it's not given and provided by the school, there's a boy that children, who must, his need.
I like the Cubs.
And I got a son, yeah, and he's a Cubs. My son was a senior last year and he lived for baseball. He was going to play college baseball at a different location other than Platteburg State. He lost his senior season playing baseball. And for anybody to say it doesn't mean something to wear the Eagle jersey and Beatman Town jersey, it means a lot to this season. And I need, I feel need to advocate for those kids, even if it's, you know, it's shorter, you can get this season. But the youth athletics, you play Mariners, you have a great summer playing Mariners and that filled the void. If we need towns to fill the void, or club teams or other organizations, I, I've always supported those other organizations. But I would, I advocate very strongly that interscholastic sports in schools is better product than those club teams. I just feel that very strong.
With the exception of the Adrona Mountain and the Trash.
Has there been a conversation about moving the sports to spring?
It was a minor conversation, that wasn't support, they were just, the thought in mind, I believe, and I was in the room. I'm gonna have a question for, for Robert Reyes tomorrow. Because it made a lot of sense to me. I've been advocating for baseball, softball, tennis, golf, all our traditional spring sports is one in the fall. But the problem is if you get, the way you can't get your spring sports in, now you've lost them two seasons. So some of the thought processes, if you don't get your fall season in, now your fall season is only lost it once. And now you get your winter, and they, they lost, some of them lost the championships. They got most of the goal of the season in, so you try to get the winter and you don't, now all three seasons have lost one season. They didn't really have a play with that spring to fall because the thought that you may not get it off the ground. Now you're taking a baseball kid that's, or a spring sport athlete that's lost all three seasons. I think to give it a time, I, I, one of the things that I noticed, this is a great discussion I'm glad to hear. My phone rings off the hook because your community feels that sports was following up starting September twenty-first. It was in the paper, Kamal said we're starting September twenty-first.
Also said we're testing kids for COVID.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I, I would love for you guys to, I'm glad you're sitting here. I would love to have a precision or at least a direction on what we're gonna do. So I can say to parents from the couple, we're gonna examine school out of those. And we're gonna be, be, be examined athletics in three weeks and decide which direction we can save, so our school can use around. And I've been pretty much saying that, but not full direction.
Okay, two things for you Ken, one is gonna be finances, I'll come to that in a second. This morning you shot me, you told me what people in the community, where she have two, two, two young kids, I know, are ready to go play sports. But you told me what the community members are telling you about Beatman Town.
And more than just one community, parents are saying, you guys have to make it. Beatman Town has to make it. You guys are going five days a week, you have, you have to do this because we're all looking to you. Everybody's watching Beatman Town and if they can do it, we can do it. And I'm serious, this is what parents are saying. They, they are really saying, please, and fingers crossed and like, please, we're all looking for you because we, we want our kids back in school five days a week too. So if you guys can do it, that means we can do it. And I, I can't tell you, I don't know how many parents have said that. So it's like we have a whole little crowd of Clay County rooting for Beatman Town because they want to see it work. They, yeah, they want to see you in school five days.
And then, Jen, if, when I went to you and I said to you, we're gonna lose twenty percent, we quantified that. If that was the reality when we were creating the budget, would sports be in the budget? Would sports be in the budget?
No.
Absolutely. So that, like, if you put yourself back in the budget, make it process. When we cut four million dollars out, we kept sports in. People say, well, it's just a drop in the bucket. Yeah, well, all we have left are crops in the bucket. That's all we have left and we have to, man, our, we can't put twenty kids in the class unless they're in the gym or some other, in here or something. In the library, which there are gonna be, right? But all we have left are those drops and that, and it wouldn't have been in the budget. We would have to cut another two points of a million dollars out of the budget. And that's something you gotta, you have to, you know, we have to look the community in the eye and say, you have this and a whole lot more want to be in the budget. So this year, right now, we're looking at, without making any changes, if we let everything run, we're looking at eating two point.
Actually, I went back to look in the scenario, if it included one point six. So we're looking at over a million dollar.
Be included in one point seven, okay? So we're looking at our, that's good news because there was gonna be two point seven. It would have been two point seven, just one point one hundred. So right now, for the first time now, we're running a bu, a budget, we're already deep all of our front balance and still be a loss of a million dollars there. And that isn't one of us all, right? You don't have, you don't have a ton of those dollars you just can win.
Your savings account goes so far.
But the other side of it is, you're not running full state of athletics the whole year either. Right, to run a couple of soccer matches, or could you just keep doing what you're doing? Could the kids just keep, money is the same. Now, guess what I say to everybody? Somebody mentioned it here when the one who dropped their kids out, it's an inconvenience. There's nothing about pandemic school that is as severe an inconvenience. There's nothing about pandemic school that you go back, you look at and go, like, this is perfect. There's nothing that we look at, we, I look at the work these folks did up there, I say, it is awesome that we have that. But it's still painful to look at. And so having kids play, having kids just play, as if you talked about, we talked about. That is wonderful, that is the inconvenience of not wearing the uniform and playing on the turf. Maybe we just still do that. I'll, I'll get off this whole box. I would like to hear from, from the, from our members who have been silent on this, just so we have our marching orders on this. I'm not asking for a resolution, but I'm asking whether you think you're foolish to even look at this in twenty-one days? Or, you know, let's go to twenty-one days or, hey, fire up engine, let's go. All those, I, we're all fine.
I'd start off with something Mr. Myers said made me think that. I coached modified football last year and probably more than half of those kids don't have the resources, the parental support, the ability to play anything or get to town games or travel, forget about it. That's way out of their ability. So, you know, we had, I think we were forty-five kids, I mean, there was a substantial amount of kids who just liked being a part of a team. They didn't even necessarily care about starting, they played hard, they practiced hard, but, I mean, I. But, I mean, I, the first time in my, um, coaching career, you know, I guess this is true when I was a kid too, but I don't recall. Seeing it in different light as an adult now, there's so much, um, offered to the kids that, that don't have the ability or that, like I said, parental support just given to and from practices or games. That it, it brought a lot to the school and the kids in the school district having school sports. So I would say that I'm in support of, um, you know, establishing school 21 days and then, look, no guarantees. Looking at it, how are we doing, you know, and making, uh, everybody aware that, you know, we're gonna reevaluate as we go along and hope to start bringing in practices until we can. Anyway, that's what I would score.
So obviously, I already spoke up on this. Obviously, I would like our kids to play. But if there's no money to play, that's, that's just a fact, that there's no money to play. The one thing I would like to tap out there for parents is don't just throw it off the table. Say, no, that's, that's a big inconvenience for everybody. So I don't mind the 21 day plan. Obviously, like I already said, let's get this, education is way more important than athletics. But, um, I, I would like to at least, I don't know, maybe if we could ever get there, but just to say, all sports are canceled. That's, that's a big, that's a big one.
I'm just curious what it would take in the next, like, you know, I mean, like, the, some remnants of that 20% cut, I would assume. Because we just said it, sports are off the table, we don't have to correct them somehow. So that's a scary thing going in the next, like, cycle with a rain in football field, you know what I mean? Which, um, is difficult. I don't know, it just sounds like the governing body and some of the school districts are kind of on heads. And like I said, club teams could be away. Kids won't travel. There's a risk if you go outside of your area to look for a club team. You're bringing something back if you go to S account. Or further. That's a risk, I thought, just saying. Whether we keep it in the bubble like the NBA does. I don't know, it's, it's a huge discussion, obviously. But opening on the 21st is the first school I feel, uh, early for, sorry. If we need, I mean, a couple of weeks to take the temperature literally of, of our kids and our staff, then I'm gonna be, like, a pause on sports.
Um, yeah, I was, you know, I just opened up a conversation, so, but in general, my numbers guy, statistically, it was somewhere between 3, 4 seconds. I would think that, that the issue is of the risk with the level we have. Again, like, like Mike said, you don't have a hundred kids playing either. And, and the downfall is there are a lot of kids that, that can't afford to do what we do right now. And that is, that is, that's hard part. But operationally, I think if you get a P WAD, just focus on school, get going, and then revisit.
There is a 21st.
Oh, 21st.
After we establish something, the district can learn.
Yes. So that becomes earlier than the topic. I think we just need to take it from the beginning.
I don't know, but I'll say it again, but I think I heard what's. I mean, I don't have to, they're playing sports right now, so it's me, sports are the first thing on my mind. Getting them in school and getting them education, a foundation is where that's the first thing on my mind. It also, um, you know, takes away the daycare issues, the childcare issues, like that. They're actually at school, socializing and learning. So I think, I'm a fan of sports and I think that I just, it's gonna, I think it should just definitely take time. It's not, but it's not number one. And it is important, but kids can play. They can get together and they can do, they can play town songs and things like that to kind of get through. But I want my kid to be in school. I want him to be safe. I want him to be healthy. So he had the opportunity to play, so. So giving it a little time, I think, to me, just makes sense. There's no sense of rushing. And financially, I mean, if there were no sports, no sports from here, and I feel terrible as a senior, absolutely. But I'd like to plan to do something else otherwise. The end of the last, the end of last year was just, you know, the senior class, having traffic for that, you know? Like seeing if they win, no problem. So, I mean, at least if you said, hey, no sports this year, save some money on that, whatever. I mean, I, I first and foremost, I just think that we need to wait it out a little while, make sure that we're, we're, we're running education for kids. And I feel, um, everything is all up in the air right now. I mean, we could close school next week, start, and to throw athletics into, on top of it, it's just, I think we should wait. See what happens now with the education, with the, you know, and how, how school goes when it opens. And then take on athletics after that.
I agree.
You agree?
I agree that we should win.
I just think, I can't imagine how much has been put into opening school. The boss, everything else that goes with athletics. Man, and the financial burden, like everything that goes wrong with that. Huge. We, and just to get the kid from the door has taken months and tremendous amount of work and effort and time and just breaking stories. And we still don't know the story. We shut this first.
Right, we still don't know the story.
Yeah.
One of the things that we have to spend some time on, you know, obviously a little bit, is, uh, we have worked on a scenario. If it doesn't work, um, how do we still provide daycare for kids here for lives today? And use some of our staff and then do it off, help watch those kids, feel secure. So we do have a, we have a backup plan for failure or education.
I, I just want to remind everyone that this is not athletic, it's not, like, games are super popular, but it's really easy to just say athletics. And then, um, I really think that we just need to be able to teach the children, the kids about districts and the students of our district. Do that and do it well. And then start introducing, um, and augmenting their education through athletics next year, when we can all be.
In safety.
In safety.
And I would be committed to, um, looking at solutions to give kids a chance to participate in ways in which they want to, whether it was in all these ways, differently too. I would be committed to, you know, everywhere else we're going here is different. Why would we, why would we, you know, think that sports could just be the same?
Or exercise.
Or exercise. School play outside.
Because I need to be in an outstanding drama, drama club. I mean, I'm asleep.
Correct.
She's looking at the drama, thinking that we're not having to be done, just get your free.
I just want to thank the board and the, um, the audience for the participation in this really good conversation. Helps us realize where we stand and supporting that from what it stands.
Before we move on from athletics, but finish our meeting, I was, um, curious about, we were talking about fall sports and letting. Cause I know we had posted a lot of positions to reapply or there were openings.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the, where, where are we in the process of?
Well, we're just hiring in general and definitely sports, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're losing people. We lost McCann today, we lost Sepe today, I think that's it. We want to hire people, we're not, they're not coming in the door. Always is a one. There's some positions that we just have to hire. There's a, there's a combination of administrative position that actually generates revenue. That can't be done by just the one person that's in that department right now. If we don't do that, we'll open ourselves up to lawsuits and the loss of $400,000 from that.
Like someone who writes grants?
No, this is just somebody who tracks homeless kids, foster kids, uh, holds 504s meetings. And is there any other income stream there helps me do a 3K? Is there any other income stream there that can help?
Well, yeah, homeless is available.
Homeless is available. So that, if you, if you track that and go through the bureaucracy, that most districts don't have personnel to do that. Or it doesn't make sense because they have two homeless kids and we have more. Um, they don't, you don't get fun, you don't get fun. So that's a particular issue. French, it's an issue. There's a lot of other positions out there that we need. And then there's one other issue is it's still in the budget is the, uh, we have a community schools allocation that wasn't cut. And that's, um, can only be used for certain things. And that money was always used for our school resource officer. And, um, we did away with that during COVID because you didn't need a school resource officer. But we had to reappoint it for that because if, and we wanted to do what the city of Flatford was doing. And it lasted because I don't know if you spoke to Stephen Baker, but the city council turned, rejected what they were doing. So now we're left with either going back and, um, spending that $100,000 on one, uh, school resource officer that works the sheriff's department schedule or being creative and looking at spending that money differently. So creating the safety that we need for, and we need more safety than we had before for less money. So that's a higher piece too. Is there any particular position that you were thinking about?
I don't know, I was also asking about, um, the fall, the open fall sports positions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I know there's a lot of question marks.
So, yeah, then what are you gonna add? We have six A's that we don't, they're hidden, they're black. Okay, so we, so we have six A positions open, which could end up in a lawsuit as well. In terms of sports, we have six fall sports positions that we need to make a determination on. Um, we haven't interviewed for a number of reasons. Number one is because we've been doing absolutely everything here at the school. Number two, there's no point hiring, you know, people. This adds more confusion. And then number three is we're gonna have to post these things that are prorated, you know, if you want to spend their time working on accommodations for people or prorating sports, um, athletics dollars. So those are all, that's part of the mix. And then do people want, just keep going. But yes, when we do, we will, we'll be ready to make determination on those positions.
Are there any additional questions?
There's no need for that seat.
I'd like to thank a lot of the, um, the talks for doing an outstanding job. Um, it's nice to see a student, so we all look like we're staring at you. We are. That's your job, we really appreciate you. All right. Um, may be resolved at the Board of Education, a journey. 819. I have no questions, please. All right. Christopher. And then we have, like, go ahead. Any questions or stuff? You know, are, are all there? No, some change, or we shouldn't have.